...the whole Tuesday, June 9th. Let the record show that all committee members are present with the exception of Alvin Witt, who is due. Item one, the address PL 2820 by Mayor Eliot authorized New York City DOT City of Olean to enter into a continuing agreement for the receipt by the City of Olean of federal operating assistance payments pursuant to said annual broad-based applications under the coronavirus aid relief and economic security act, errors for operating activities related to COVID-19 that occur on or after January 20, 2020. Mayor.
We have Carrie here who will talk about this.
The funding is used to be for the revenue losses to support the public transportation system that has been incurred after January 20 of this year. The total amount awarded by DOT is $729,689. I collected various costs incurred that include first transit, own substitution cost, lost fare revenue, lost tax revenue, and extra tax time to revise budget projections and review the COVID-19 pandemic impact on the tariffs. I also have PP expenses, but right now I have a total of just under $15,000 that I'll make that reimbursement or plan to do. And I also posed the question to DOT if any of the owed partner shares and their contribution become financially unfeasible, if that would be an eligible item, and they're looking into it and will get back to me.
Is that a possibility, Carrie? That we, that some of the partners may be unable to pay?
I'm just trying to be proactive. I did not approach any one of them personally. I wanted to gauge DOT and get their guidance before I even approached them, so that being an option.
Any other questions for Carrie? Okay, seeing none, would someone like to sponsor?
I'll sponsor.
Sponsored by Alden Crawford. Second by Alden DePaulino, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed. Okay, 2820 is approved.
I don't think it's counted, but it's ever been.
Okay, with one session, please note that. Thank you very much. Okay, so it is approved and will be referred to tonight's regular meeting. Item two, PL 2920 by Mayor Eliot authorized transfer of $74,284.51 from street lighting to cap, from street lighting to capital fund 188 for costs associated with Waffle Olean Phase 2. Mayor.
Thanks, Paul. Last week we talked about this at the committee of the whole, and we used a figure of eighty, around $86,000. It's actually $86,215 that we received as a rebate check for doing this project. But we, to start the project, we had to put up $11,930.49. So for bookkeeping and to keep this, keep this, I guess for bookkeeping purposes, we said way back then that we would reimburse, reimburse the account that the money that the $11,900 came out of. So that leaves us to $74,284.51 that we can move into the Waffle Olean Page 2. Now, you also remember that Bob talked about we needed an additional, we may need an additional $51,000, this will up that to about $63,000. We won't know that till the project is near, near over.
Was the $51,000 in order? I don't, I don't remember.
Option two, additions for that.
So we could complete the whole Waffle Olean Phase 2 over main, front, that area there.
The lighting, the lighting, the walls?
Yeah.
Yeah, the walls?
Yeah. So this is basically keeping Eliot counting Bobber for the waiters as soon as possible.
Any other questions for Bill? Seeing none, would someone like to sponsor?
I'll sponsor.
Sponsored by Alden Canis, go second.
I'll second.
Second by Alden Doherty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed. 2920 is approved and will be referred to tonight's regular meeting. I'm making motion to adjourn. Go second. Everybody on the stage, all in favor? Aye, and opposed. So to give everybody a heads up, we are going to do an executive session. I don't think we may all talk that, but yes.
The Green Hornet or Cato that wears the mask like that? The Green Hornet or Cato? Hmm. Cato just had the black driver's mask. The Lone Ranger. He had a black mask though, not a Grove Street for Life mask. It's not every day that I can make a San Andreas reference.
Count all the word of the regular meeting of the council Tuesday, June 9th, please call all.
Alden Canis?
Here.
Alden Doherty?
Here.
Alden Crawford?
Here.
Alden Palico?
Here.
Alden Estrella?
Here.
Counting all the members. Here. Please rise to the panel, ladies and gentlemen.
We seek your help with our affairs tonight. Bless this meeting with your divine diligence and help us the best use for our home with all of diverse opinions today. Yet, we wish to make our differences in each agreement satisfactory to all. Please share a little wisdom with us to help us to the right by all concerned. Thank you for your heavenly blessing and my heavenly prayer.
The United States are, to the Republic of Georgia stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Receiving the approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting.
The regular meeting of the Olean Council was held on Tuesday, May 26, 20 at 6:45 PM. Present, Alden Gonzalez, Alden Doherty, Alden Crawford, Alden DePaulino, and Alden Estrella.
Counting all the members, watching to approve the minutes from previous regular meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alden Doherty, all in favor?
Aye.
I am from enclosed. Paying minutes are approved, committee reports and unfinished council business.
We have none.
Communication from Mayor.
Thank you, Paul. I just have one. I have a resignation letter here from Barry Clowson, that I would like to inform you that I will be retired effective June 30th. I appreciate the opportunity that I've served the community for the past 20 years. I wish you and your officers of the Olean Police Department nothing but the best. And this was to Chief Riley. This is a copy I received. So we want to thank Officer Clowson for his 90 years of service for the Olean Police Department and wish him well.
Mr. Laney's communicating.
We have none.
City official reports.
We have none.
Proposal legislation for January 12.
PL 2820 by Mayor Eliot, who goes to regular meeting Tuesday, June 9, 20 by Council President. PL 30-20 by Alden Crawford, refer to regular meeting Tuesday, June 9, 20 by Council President. PL 21-20 by Mayor Eliot, refer to regular meeting Tuesday, June 9, 20 by Council President. PL 32-20 by Mayor Eliot, refer to regular meeting Tuesday, June 9, 20 by Council President. PL 23-20 by Alden Estrella, refer to regular meeting Tuesday, June 23, 20 by Council President.
Okay, so obviously the public comment section is next. We, this meeting is now open to the public, as we said, staying on our council. If you make a comment, please do so at this time. Anyone? Okay, findings of the.
None.
Resolution?
Resolution 38-20, PL 28-20 by Alden Crawford, secret by Alden Palico, to authorize New York City DOT and the City of Olean to enter into a continuing agreement for the receipt by the City of Olean of federal operating assistance payment pursuant to said annual project application under coronavirus and relief and economic security act for operating activities related to COVID-19 that occurred on or after January 20, 2020.
Okay, so just discussed a few minutes ago, any comments, questions or concerns? Seeing none, would you quickly call all.
Alden Canis?
Yes.
Alden Doherty?
Yes.
Alden Crawford?
Yes.
Alden Palico?
Yes.
Olean comes out?
Yes.
Looking at is 5 to 0 and one last question. Resolution 39-20, PL 29-20, to authorize the transfer of $74,284.51 from street lighting to capital fund 188 for costs associated with Waffle Olean Phase 2.
Okay, once again, discussing committee at all events ago, any comments, questions or concerns?
No, Paul, if I may.
Yep.
I'm glad that the council is moving forward with properly funding Phase 2. I think that we can all agree that we need to make Olean downtown as vibrant as it once was, and this is, looking at the plans for the last meeting, this is the right design. I'm glad we're springing for the additional lift of balance, and I think this is going to be a true asset to our downtown region.
Sound good, agreed? Anyone else? Counting all the people, please call all.
Alden Canis?
Yes.
Alden Doherty?
Yes.
Alden Crawford?
Absolutely.
Alden Palico?
Yes.
Alden Estrella?
Yes.
And Alden Gonzalez.
Yes.
Looking at is 6 to 0. Resolution 40-20, PL 30-20, authorize the transfer of $17,392.51 from general fund balance to capital fund 150, 160 replacements.
Okay, so we have been discussing this quite a bit recent. Any comments, questions or concerns? Any comments or questions? Okay, would someone like to sponsor?
I'll sponsor.
Sponsored by Alden Crawford, I have a second. Second by Alden Anstine. All in court, please call all.
Alden Canis?
Yes.
Alden Doherty?
Yes.
Alden Crawford?
Yes.
Alden Palico?
Yes.
Alden Estrella?
Yes.
Looking at is 6 to 0. Resolution 41-20, PL 31-20, to authorize award of contract for construction portion of Waffle Olean Phase 2 to DMH Excavement to include the alternatives 1 and 2 in an amount of less than $13 million.
Okay, Mr. Crawford. We did discuss this committee last week. Any comments or questions on this one? Obviously we don't have Bob Rink here tonight, so.
We discussed this at length last meeting, and this covers, this is why we just moved the additional $74,000 into this account to help move this project forward.
Was the original project estimate of Waffle Olean Phase 2, the drink, like when we first did, talked about?
I'm sorry.
Yeah. I feel like it was a lot less than I thought.
Well, the estimates were less, and remember, the, it came in higher, it came in above, higher than what we might have.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Would someone like to sponsor?
I'll sponsor.
Sponsored by Alden DePaulino, someone like a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alden Crawford, all in court, please call all.
Alden Canis?
Yes.
Alden Doherty?
Yes.
Alden Crawford?
Yes.
Alden Palico?
Yes.
Alden Estrella?
Yes.
Looking at is 6 to 0. Resolution 42-20, PL 42-20 by Alden Crawford, secret by Alden Crawford, authorize the transfer of $34,000 from general fund balance to light handle, 31 to 0, 5 to 30. Police, public, all the drivers.
Okay, so again, another topic that we've been discussing at length, this is up for the lease, it's worth five. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
I was originally going to vote no on this call, but time against leasing, I think so we should purchase the vehicles. Since our financial experts advised to give it a try, I'm willing to give it a try, see how it performs, and works out, but still feel that we should purchase vehicles. This is my personal opinion.
Anyone else? Seeing none, would you quickly call all.
Alden Canis?
Yes.
Alden Doherty?
Yes.
Alden Crawford?
Yes.
Alden Palico?
Yes.
Alden Estrella?
Yes.
And Alden Gonzalez?
Yes.
Looking at is 6 to 0. Resolution 43-20, PL 43-20, let reason grant the waiver pursuant to Olean's in code, code section 13-3, Olean establishment, we on premises would tell liquor licensees, license to all, to allow expansion of said licenses premises, consistent with guidelines set forth by the new state with the license authority, establishment pursuant to corporate order effective June 12, 2020.
Okay, so this was a topic of conversation last week as well. I think what we ought to do, obviously we didn't need sponsors for this, but can we kind of like, I don't know, maybe this is something that Nick could tie in. Could you kind of give us the, just so somebody asks us tomorrow what this is about, just so that we get everybody on the same page.
So last week, the governor issued an executive order which allowed outdoor dining in restaurants. Along with that executive order, he directed the liquor authority to issue guidelines for how liquor could be served outside on and across public right of way. So what these guidelines do is they authorize the city to essentially work with a licensee, an existing licensee of the liquor authority to expand their footprint during the COVID-19 epidemic. So for example, if you had a bump out in front of your restaurant, you could come to the city, you could do a joint application to the liquor authority and utilize that parking spaces. Some municipalities have gone and closing specific streets and allowing outdoor dining on those streets. This allows the exemption from our open container law, which prohibits open containers on public areas in the city. It allows us to expand our public container law to meet the guidelines of the liquor authority. So it's, it would probably, as I know, the governor announced today, or the governor that we're going to phase three next week for the issued guidelines for the restaurants, that they'll be able to open at 50% capacity indoors. So this will allow some restaurants to make up that additional capacity without more seating. Keep in mind, we still have our city codes, we have to buy and buy, add, find clearance for pedestrians to traverse the sidewalk, but it does give us a little bit more flexibility in dealing with our establishments and expanding the COVID-19 crisis.
The governor today, with Nitrone, and they, they represented the State Liquor Authority on that, and they, just what Nick said, there is, they're on their website, I think it's www.sla的新york.gov, if you have any, you want to read up on this, you get on their website, they have a lot of questions and answers on this. There's, they're trying to make it very easy for establishments who have liquor license to be able to do this. So this is one step that we need to do to authorize us to work with the restaurants and prepare these, as these applications for when, so.
And the only thing I'd like to add is that any existing licensees or establishments that only have any questions about this, they can contact either the mayor's office or the city attorney's office, and we'll, we'll work with you through the process to make sure that you're in compliance with what the liquor authority wants and what the city requires from our public.
Nick, does this, the way we're wording this, would we end this basically when the governor lifts restrictions related to COVID?
It would either, it would automatically end at that time, so it's tied into the governor's orders. Whenever the governor issues another executive order to end any of this, you guys as a council could revisit it at that time and say, hey, we like the idea, maybe this is something we want to expand in the future.
Okay.
But it would, it does have a kind of built-in sunset provision that when the governor's executive order in the COVID-19 crisis is declared past, if it ever is, then, then we would revisit it at that time.
Okay.
And just to confirm, like this is not lifting, as we talked about various scenarios last week, this is not creating the ability for open container throughout our entire downtown? This is only for, this is specific for the restaurant or the establishment?
That's a great point. The liquor authority's guidelines are specifically for licensees, so it's not for an individual to take it upon themselves to, you know, use it and consume an open container up and down the street. You have to essentially, what the liquor authority is doing is they're extending their jurisdiction over the public space so that they have enforcement capability over that space.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they went on today, they talked about questions like, okay, if a bar owner has a, a friend wants to let them use a space in front of their building, couple doors down, does that make, no, they said no, has to be in front of the building or on the side of the building, it could even be behind their building, this specific rules of that. So it's, you can't just pick a parking lot, say, we're setting shop here, that's to be associated with where their license is, it's an extension of their license, so.
That, that footprint has to be predetermined or part of the application when they come to the city, is that right, Nick? They, they come to the city and say, our footprint and our railing, now we're going to expand it?
Right, so the liquor authority, when you go for the license, it's very specific on the diagrams you have to submit as to what is your license premises. So what they've done is if you own the property, and there's several establishments that took advantage of this recently, and did it very well, like State King, for example, they had their own parking lot. The liquor authority said, you don't have to do anything more than draw a line on where the parking lot is on your existing application and send it us into us within five days if you start it, and you can, you can do that. It gets a little bit hairier when you're talking about the public spaces. And that, that means that we have to join in as a municipality, so you're, you're essentially giving the mayor the authority to sign off on the application that has to be submitted to the liquor authority with the individual licensee's application saying, I want to use these parking spaces, or I want to use this adjacent side street. That's, you know, so we have oversight of what is, we're working in conjunction with the state to make sure that we've got an handle on what's, what's going on.
I guess the prime example would be, if he wants to put tables back out there, he would have to put all the applications, we would have to be part of that and say, and say, yes, that's okay. And that's what this is about.
And it would, at that point, it would just go through your office, you would be the city attorney, correct? It wouldn't?
Yeah.
Nothing would happen. So it would streamline the process.
Okay, thank you.
Let me ask you this, we're talking, this is not necessarily directly related to this at hand, but we're talking about parking spaces, does, does the City of Olean have a mechanism in place to, say, if you can borrow one of the set of tables in the parking spaces in front of their spot, in front of their restaurant? Like in the spot, like, you know, gate it off or whatever? Is that something we have a mechanism to do?
We, we do, but it's, we have a charge for it.
Okay.
And, but under the liquor authority now, in that plan, if somebody wants to use the roadway or parking spaces, in that plan would be how, how are you going to protect the people from the vehicle?
Right.
So you have to have, you have to show what the barrier is going to be.
Not much for protection, though. I mean, a lot of those are plastic chains, like, we, we have them up at my, at the Sidewalk Cafe, and it's, I mean, the elephant feet concrete blocks with a little chain link fence post, and then like nylon chain that goes between them, so, I mean, not stopping a car, but prevents a drunk from.
But we're not, we're not trying to guard those.
Yeah.
They, they talked about that today, and you have to show the liquor authority that you have a, you can be able to protect the public, too, so.
Yeah.
Oh, the other thing they mentioned, too, this does not, this is for seating, it's not for standing around consuming, it's for seating, so. Well, like he said, you got tables six feet apart, you can't have, you know, people sitting at the tables and five or six or seven or a crowd gathered around, standing there drinking. It has, it is for seating, so.
Any other questions or comments? I'm just, Paul, I got a quick question. Are, are you allowed to put up tents in those, in that area? In the, in the, in the public space or on the private space? In the, in the private and the public space?
If, if it was approved, sure. I mean, one of the issues that I think the mayor's bringing up is, if you were going in the parking spaces, you probably want to work something out with the city with jersey barriers or something up to protect, you know, protect people sitting there. And if that were the case, if you had the more permanent structure, if that was how they came to the city and presented it, then you could, I guess theoretically approve that, that idea of a permanent structure, but like you talked about, Rick, and see that would be, you know, we're talking about our main drag here, that would be vision or other, other issues.
Jersey barriers, huh?
Yeah, you talk about trash, what, what term I had. I get.
Yeah, no, snow fence.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
So the, is it the guidance from the governor that restricts it to seated individuals? I mean, I'm trying to look at it, let's say.
The liquor authority issues what the guideline were.
Okay, so that's where the seating comes from.
Correct, you know, you can't, you can have a, you can have a, it can't be underneath any permanent roof structure, but it could be under a temporary one.
As the guy from the State Liquor Authority said, this is, this is to expand seating for restaurants, so.
I think Corning is doing something wild like that. I think they're talking about closing market street.
And everyone was talking about closing one of their, their streets, or something like that. I think we should maybe, I don't think maybe, I don't think it would be bad if we waited and seen some of these places do, and then maybe kind of follow whatever you feel.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would like to see it come back, even when everything's lifted, and look and see what we think as far as expanding this, regardless of what COVID-19's doing.
Right, because, I mean, because we still have that, you know, the Beef and Barrel, for example, has always had the outdoor seating where you, obviously after that first year, they, you couldn't drink there anymore. And then.
That's one of the reasons why you couldn't, is because the liquor authority won't let you cross a public space to deserve.
Right.
Unless, unless you have explicit authority from the municipality.
Right, so that's why.
We already have that with our cafe permits, and anybody that's a licensee under the New York State Liquor Authority should look into doing a cafe permit with the city because it gives you something farther than COVID- because it gives you something farther than COVID-nineteen.
Gotcha, okay.
We already have that mechanism in place. So, the ones that are currently licensed, they can amend their license legally to include that, that space going past the COVID-nineteen crisis. The city really doesn't have any, any say in it enough. They can deny you the cafe license and then you can't have that expanded space. But if you have it, I would see that.
But, and then the other, the other, I mean, the other caveat too is, there was, we brought up smokers as an example. Like, you couldn't walk outside of a bar to go smoke a cigarette or take a phone call. So, now, this still doesn't help people with that issue because you, it's only seating. You have to go out there, sit down at a table to light a cigarette or to take a phone call.
Right. And there are certain clauses in the liquor law that say that, you know, if the city didn't have an open container law, you could leave the premises with a theory, you just can't come back into the premises. So, it would help with your, your phone call example. But that's neither here or there for this purpose. This purpose is specifically to expand the footprint of a restaurant to offset the loss of capacity that they have or currently have and that they will have when they go to the fifty percent occupancy rate, so.
Okay, any other questions?
Oh, I was just going to say, if there are no other questions, I'd like to sponsor this.
Okay. Sponsored by Alden Doherty, I would like a second. Second by Alden DePaulo, court, please call all.
Alden Tannis?
Yes.
Alden Doherty?
Yes.
Alden Crawford?
Yes.
Alden Fannix?
Yes.
Alden Estegar?
Yes.
And Alden Gonzalez?
Yes.
Looking at six to zero.
Okay, so before we adjourn, we do have to go to executive session. I am told it will be brief. So, I make a motion to adjourn to executive session. Do I have a second?
Do you have a list of reasons?
The reason would be to discuss your vote.
The acquisition of property.
Acquisition of property.
I'll second.
Second by Alden Crawford, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Second by Alden Anastasia, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Adjourned.